Good ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. We're here at the 901 Main Street Public Hearing, a carload of comments. I'm calling to order our milage rate public hearing, which started that evening in this time, and we'll call Director Public Relations, Director Joe Gumm, and he will direct the staff to move forward with the presentation.
Chairman, good evening. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. The PR department has prepared this video that we're about to watch regarding the milage rate for informational purposes. To those who aren't quite sure how the milage rate impacts them, thank you for letting us and allowing us to present it.
Thank you, Director.
What is the milage rate? Well, simply put, it's what you owe on taxes on your property. Each mill represents $1 for every $1,000 in property value. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a 2021 milage rate of 18.016 mils, which will require an increase in property taxes by 7.94%. Now, although the county would be keeping the same milage rate from last year, the state still views it as a tax increase because property values are going up, which is good news for residents who plan on selling their property in the near future, since their property value and home equity has increased. To help lower your tax bill, the homestead exemption and/or the homestead option sales tax, also known as host, can be applied to that amount. So for instance, if your house is valued at $100,000, you would owe approximately $720.64 in taxes. But with both the homestead exemption and host exemption applied, you would only owe approximately $135.12. Similarly, if your house is valued at $250,000, you would owe approximately $1,801.60 in taxes. Now, after applying both the homestead exemption and the host exemption, you would only owe approximately $459.41. That's a lot of savings. So where exactly do these tax dollars go? Well, for every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives 18% or 18 cents. Let me repeat that. For every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives 18% or 18 cents. The remaining 82% goes toward the school system, which sets its own milage rate. The 18 cents from each dollar funds public safety, general government, court services, recreation, and transportation, which are all included in the general fund. We want to hear from you on what you have to say about this, so be sure to come out to one of the three public milage rate hearings. The first one will be held on Tuesday, August 17th, at 6:00 PM in the Assembly Hall located at 901 Main Street. The second will take place on Thursday, August 19th, at 9:00 AM at the JP Carr Community Center located at 981 Taylor Street. And the last public hearing will take place on Tuesday, August 24th, at 9:00 AM in the Assembly Hall located at 901 Main Street. After the 9:00 AM public hearing on August 24th, the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners will hold a called meeting immediately after at 9:30 AM to set the milage rate. Now, if the milage rate is adopted at 18.016 mils, it will stay the lowest it's ever been in seven years, when it was set at 20.7 mils in 2013. We certainly hope this helps you understand the milage rate better, and we're looking forward to seeing you at the upcoming public hearings.
Thank you to Director Gumm, our Public Relations Department for really breaking it down, Commissioners providing for us a breakdown example as to how this work oftentimes is so confusing, not just to the boards of that, but to the citizens who impacted that and understanding all of it. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and call up Mr. Matt Underwood from Terminus with our proposed 2021 milage rate presentation. Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for giving me this opportunity to make this presentation. Residents, we have about 10 slides to kind of summarize the milage rate presentation. This is Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' presentation of the proposed milage rate for 2021. Next slide, please. This schedule here shows the budget allocation for the county. Basically, 49% of the funds are spent on public safety. Another 26% is on general government. Court services, 11%. Recreation, 9%. And transportation, 5%. Next slide. These are the highlights of the 2021 budget. As you can see, the 2021 budget includes all current programs and services being funded. It also had a balanced budget for 2021. One of the highlights, I guess, of the increases in the budget has been the COVID-19 pandemic. We continue to have to spend money on personal protective equipment, cleaning supplies, and signage for the protection of our residents and for the protection of our employees. I guess a few weeks ago, we kind of thought COVID was kind of dying out a little bit with the vaccines and stuff, but it reared its head again and costing more for the county. Another thing is public safety. The sheriff's salaries and overtime and benefits for the county continue to increase, and the benefits continue to increase across the county. If you think about the healthcare cost, it's gone up annually every year for the county. The county itself insures it, and that cost is increasing every year. Public safety, we looked at the NAF Care Agreement for the jail. That contract was renewed last year, and that contract does include an expiration cost on contracts, on the cost as it go up on an annual basis. Another part of it is a stepping up initiative. We're trying to take a holistic view on public health and public safety and trying to provide mental health services for residents of Rockdale County. That's a process that is underway. It's not built out totally yet, but the county is working on building that out. Economic development, we've looked at increased funding for the economic development initiatives. One way the county can generate more money is bring more people into the county and expand services throughout the county. The parking recreation department, we established a separate department focused on the master plan. Rockdale County did a master plan and a strategic plan, envisioned Rockdale, and everybody has been working on that process and that plan. That is one part of parking recreation services. EMA, I think there was a committee established last year, and the residents wanted to see improved services from EMA, so that was broken out as a separate department. Then we have animal control services. Animal control services, we are doing a day service and an evening service at additional cost to the county. And then the election. We had a runoff election in January, and then we had another election here back in May or June, so we've had two elections this year. The next slide, please. This is a slide of the digest history, and if you can see, back in 2009, it was at 2.8 million. And then with the stock market crash, it decreased until 2013 to 1.8 million. And looking at this slide, what it shows is just the county has really just recovered from the stock market crash in 2008 with the digest going down, and now it's increased back up to 3.1 million. Next slide, please. This is the milage rate history, and what you can see here is in 2013, the highest it was, was 20.7. It stayed in the 20 range through 2019 at 20.19. And then the last couple of years is at 18.02. The actual full rate is 18.016, just one more decimal place. Next slide, please. This schedule is really laid out to kind of show you the participants in setting the digest and actually setting the milage rate. The Board of Assessors up at the top left-hand corner really reevaluates properties and tries to come up with the assessed value of properties as of the current date. Then the Board of Commissioners, the City of Conyers, and the Board of Education actually look at everything and set their budget. And once they set the budget, they set the milage rate. All of that information goes over to the Tax Commissioner, and the Tax Commissioner has the final assessment on the milage rate. And as you can see here, one mill equals $1, $1 tax per $1,000 taxable value. Next slide, please. In fact, this is a key slide. When we look at our property taxes, we have to really look at where the money actually goes. 82% of every tax dollar that's paid goes over to the school. 18% comes to the county. So as the video shows, 18% of the money that comes in, of every dollar that comes in, goes to the county. Next slide, please. The property tax calculation, we want to really show you the amount of money from each, from the 18.016 mils that actually comes to the county. So we have two examples. On a property value at $100,000, without the exemption, you'd pay $720.64. With the exemption, you'll pay $135.12. On a house valued at $200,000, the estimated property tax without the exemption is $1801.60. The estimated property tax with homestead exemption and host exemption would be $459.41. Next slide, please. This is a chart that really just shows the host exemptions, the amount of funds remitted for hosts and the host exemptions. The host remits range from, I guess, about 12, 12 and a half million dollars up to 16 or 17 million dollars in 2020. And the host exemption range from in 2012, about 12 and a half to 13 million dollars, up to about 23 or 24 million dollars. Next slide, please. Based on the proposed milage rate, you'll see that the county of 18.016, the county will generate property taxes of $58 million, non-property tax revenue of 22.3, and the total revenues for 2021 is estimated at $80,357. So property taxes make up about 72% of the total budget that the county brings in on revenue. Next slide, please. This slide again covers the timeline. We have a public hearing tonight. Then we have another public hearing on August 19th at 9:00 AM. We have a public hearing on 8/24 at 9:00 AM, and the milage rate will be set at a special call meeting at 9:30 AM on the 24th. Next slide. With that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we'll try to answer any questions you have and address any issues or concerns.
I'm going to yield at this point to the two Commissioners that may have questions for you. We do have a segment of our hearing for public comment, and many have already filled out the rate comment card. I will be calling on those shortly. Commissioner Washington, I'll start. Do you have any questions for Mr. Underwood?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Williams.
I just had one about the slide that showed the host, and I was unclear on those two terms that you used, the host remits, and then there was the host exemptions, and I didn't get the correlation of the numbers that you...
The host exemption is actually an exemption from property taxes that reduce the amount of property taxes that you have to pay.
Right. So in this context, what did that mean?
I think it's better shown on the other slide. That one, yeah.
Okay.
So if you look at a property value at $100,000, without the homestead exemption and the host exemption, a person would pay $720.64. But when you put in the host exemption and the homestead exemption, that individual would only pay $135.12. So you get a deduction for the homestead exemption, which you can claim and file, but then you also get a host exemption that reduces your property taxes.
Okay, yeah, I got that.
Okay.
I guess I just didn't understand that one particular graph.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Again, I do have, for those of you who have not filled out a rate comment card, you have plenty of time to do that, and our chief will come and get the comment card for you. I'll be calling on public comment in just a second. Commissioners, what I'd like to do right now is ask that Director Gumm and his team will bring back the video that really broke down this whole outline once again, right before we get into public comment. If you would play that for us.
What is the milage rate? Well, simply put, it's what you owe on taxes on your property. Each mill represents $1 for every $1,000 in property value. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a 2021 milage rate of 18.016 mils, which will require an increase in property taxes by 7.94%. Now, although the county would be keeping the same milage rate from last year, the state still views it as a tax increase because property values are going up, which is good news for residents who plan on selling their property in the near future, since their property value and home equity has increased. To help lower your tax bill, the homestead exemption and/or the homestead option sales tax, also known as host, can be applied to that amount. So for instance, if your house is valued at $100,000, you would owe approximately $720.64 in taxes. But with both the homestead exemption and host exemption applied, you would only owe approximately $135.12. Similarly, if your house is valued at $250,000, you would owe approximately $1,801.60 in taxes. Now, after applying both the homestead exemption and the host exemption, you would only owe approximately $459.41. That's a lot of savings. So where exactly do these tax dollars go? Well, for every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives 18% or 18 cents. Let me repeat that. For every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives 18% or 18 cents. The remaining 82% goes toward the school system, which sets its own milage rate. The 18 cents from each dollar funds public safety, general government, court services, recreation, and transportation, which are all included in the general fund. We want to hear from you on what you have to say about this, so be sure to come out to one of the three public milage rate hearings. The first one will be held on Tuesday, August 17th, at 6:00 PM in the Assembly Hall located at 901 Main Street. The second will take place on Thursday, August 19th, at 9:00 AM at the JP Carr Community Center located at 981 Taylor Street. And the last public hearing will take place on Tuesday, August 24th, at 9:00 AM in the Assembly Hall located at 901 Main Street. After the 9:00 AM public hearing on August 24th, the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners will hold a called meeting immediately after at 9:30 AM to set the milage rate. Now, if the milage rate is adopted at 18.016 mils, it will stay the lowest it's ever been in seven years, when it was set at 20.7 mils in 2013. We certainly hope this helps you understand the milage rate better, and we're looking forward to seeing you at the upcoming public hearings.
Thank you once again to our Public Relations Department. Director Relish, I'm going to move forward. Could you please read the disclaimer as relate to the tax digest hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we will have three minutes per speaker, and each speaker can please keep their comments relative to the milage rate, and we will run our timer, and when we are done, we will conclude this hearing.
Thank you so much. The first person I'd like to call up this evening is Ms. Charlotte Gillis. Come on up, Ms. Gillis.
Good evening, Commissioner and Chairman, Commissioners. I was running a little late, and I was trying to watch this on Facebook, and while Mr. Gumm was giving his first presentation, the music was playing in the background. The video was interrupted several times, so I'm hoping that his presentation and the slides could be on your website at some time for people that missed them. I might have needed to adjust my comments based on what Mr. Terminus said. But for several years, the county bragged they could meet a proposed budget without going into fund balance, the county's savings. My fund balance is savings and 401K, which many people don't have. This year, I'm having to go into my fund balance due to the inflated cost of food, gas, and housing maintenance, and now to pay property tax based on inflated appraised value. The county's value of just my land more than doubled from 2019 to 2020, and has gone up another 30% for this year. While the assessment notice didn't reflect any host credit yet, the BOC is proposing just a 70% credit when it has been as much as 82% in the past. Host and spa collections have been exceeding projections even last year in 2020, when things were shut down. Counties have gotten and are getting CARES funding and American Rescue Plan Act funds to reimburse their revenue losses and unexpected COVID-related expenses. So while the county has had extra COVID related expenses, there have been other funds to reimburse those. The county's fund balance should be in good shape right now to keep a good bond rating. I have to live within a budget. The county needs to live within a budget also. 60% of the county's tax base is residential, and the rest is commercial and industrial, so the burden of the taxes rests with the homeowners and the landlords. Raising taxes affects businesses also and affects economic development. If a company could move to a county with lower taxes, why would they stay in Rockdale where the taxes are always increasing? The county approved this budget for 2021 in December of last year, and they're now determining how to pay for what they've been spending since January of this year. At that time, in December, it was presented as a conservative budget. The proposed milage rate will be a double-digit, 10.2% increase in net taxes if adopted at the proposed rate, a $5 million-plus increase. If you care about Rockdale County citizens, do the right thing and adopt the rollback rate and a higher host credit. Show us that you can live within a conservative budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis. Thank you for what you do. Next up is Ms. Cheryl Garcia. Come on up, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This board has failed to set the basic standards of fiscal responsibility and transparency that the citizens have a right to expect from you. You've hired close to 200 employees between 2017 and 2019, including an assistant for each of you, and still you don't respond to emails from your constituents. And the water department still can't get our bills out once a month. During that same time period, the county's population only increased by 1,400 or 1.2%. So why do you need so many employees? In 2021, taxes went up 10.2%, while our social security only increased by 1.3%, and the national inflation rate only increased by 5%. So why do you need to increase our taxes by 7.94%? The county paid tens of thousands of dollars in severance pay to an employee who quit, and now you're paying $345,000 to the former finance director for an EEO settlement that none of us can understand. The county got $8.8 million from the American Rescue Plan Act in May 2021, and you all agree that you would use the money to help residents recover from the pandemic. You're using it for community programs, capital improvement, premium pay for essential employees, and 10% or $880,000 for unexpected future needs. None of you pay county property taxes, and you repeatedly demonstrate a blatant disregard for those of us who do. Commissioner Williams has a valid 100% exemption, but Chairman, your last home was foreclosed on. And Commissioner Washington, you don't own a home in Rockdale or any of the surrounding counties, and your county paycheck was garnished. If two of you can't handle your own personal finances, why should we trust you with our millions in property tax dollars? You really need to show that you want to help the residents recover from the pandemic by not raising our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, and thank you for what you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Lee Wright. Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good evening.
When I first moved to Rockdale County years ago, I liked Rockdale County, but my taste is getting sour. Taxes, taxes, taxes. That's all I hear about is taxes. You always got a way to raise taxes, but I basically, I haven't seen any real improvements in the county. You come to our HOA meetings, talk your talk, but when you come back in here, everything goes out of your brain. You don't do anything for us. You're talking about 82% of the money goes to the school board. What's the average score of our schools? A D. Do they need this money when their average scores are D? No. Rockdale County is in terrible shape, and under your administration, it basically hasn't gotten any better. It hasn't. You think you're doing a great job, you try to sell that, but you're not doing a great job. I don't know the fix. You've got all the dollars in your pocket, and you go into my back pocket to get even more dollars, but I'm not seeing anything out of this. You've got to do a better job or give up your seat, bottom line. This milage rate increase, it's not going to help anything. You're just going to get more money and do less with it. We already see that. And all these employees you're hiring, for what? We're not seeing anything. They're doing any different out there. Their curves aren't any better, the streets aren't any better, the trash collection, nothing has gotten any better. You've got to stop what you're doing and turn it around. You want to bring people into the county? Look at the county now. Get out on I-20 and head west from West Avenue down to Sigmund Road. It's a trash dump. Just look on the side of the road, westbound. It's pitiful. Every time I head towards that direction, I hate to look to the side of the road because it's a dump. It looks like a tornado has been through there, but it hasn't. I don't know if it's the county's problem or the city, but somebody needs to get together. People are going to come into this county and head back towards Atlanta and see that mess? It's not anything to be proud of. Do a better job. Shit, Ms. Washington, I asked you one time to ride through the county. You told me you did. You said, "You're a grandmother. Somebody lives in Henry County, and you ride through the county." Take the blinders off and look at the county. That's all I got to say. Do a better job or give up the seat.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and thank you for all of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Ms. Coral Lee. Ms. Coral Lee?
Good afternoon, good evening. One of the most difficult things for me standing here is I wanted to prepare something, but truly there are no words to express that. Eight days after I moved to Rockdale County in 2019, I was at one of these hearings. I begged y'all. I said, "As easy as I put my house, as easy as I purchased my house, I could put it for sale and go somewhere else." You guys are not considering that. So now I have facts. I've been in this neighborhood in Centennial Village for two years. We've had two resales that was under two years. We had two other resales that was under six months. The moment you guys sent this tax increase out, I had a neighbor that says, "I'm going to fix income. I can't do this." So of course, you guys look at this as people are cashing out. No, people literally cannot afford this. They went through the pandemic just like you and I. They cannot afford this. Some people are mentally drained, so they can't articulate to you how ridiculous this is, but you have to think of human beings. This is not pen and paper anymore. I have stuff written down. What I have written down is, this is Rockdale County. It's a small county. It is not Fulton County. 90,000, 9,200,000 people. You've got counties with a million people. Ninety thousand, ninety-two-hundred thousand people. You got counties with a million people. I don't want to live there. I want to live here, but if you make it where I can't afford to live here, the natural thing is to sell your house. Is that what you want? Is that the net effect that you have for sale by owner signs and people selling that we all leave? We could leave. We could leave and go somewhere else. So that's what I want you to consider. We're human beings that cannot take anymore of this. If I'm going to live within my budget, as some others have said, you have got to figure a way out. This is not the time for raises. This is time for everybody to buckle down and understand that we got to help people who are mentally and physically trying to recover from a pandemic. That's where we are. Please hear me. I don't want to move, but this is America. You can sell your house and you can move, but I think if you see us as people and human beings who really care about each other, you would think and you hear us say, "I'm not arguing that you can't, you know, have your assistance." That's not the point. The point is, think about cutting costs where cost is needed. I don't have cable anymore. I haven't died. There are things that I have cut back on. Can you guys think about it and cut back on things that are no longer necessary? Because this is a serious, serious issue. In twenty-eight minutes, we probably have another year and a half, year and a half more of this pandemic to go through. Do you want to see suicides? What is it that would take for you guys to understand that this is serious business? I feel the pain of people as a minister for thirty, thirty years, thirty years. I feel the pain of people. This is going to cost people's lives. Thank you. I'm Coral Lee Nelson.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Next up is Awat Awat. Come on up, Mr. Awat.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening, Commissioners. That's not a typo. My name is Awat Awat. My first and last name are the same.
Yes.
Even though I prefer to be called by my last name. I'm glad to be here. I just moved to Rockdale County, as a matter of fact, this April. And the reason I moved to Rockdale County is because I have some friends that live here. But moving here, I've noticed that all over the country now, property values are just going up ridiculously, even though the mileage rates have not been increased from last year. But we are going to be paying taxes on values that are not real. In the midst of that, a lot of us are not doing as good as we used to in terms of income-wise. We're not making money like we used to. So like previous speakers have said, consider that, please. I think in the midst of pandemic, we should be talking about reducing the rate instead of leaving it like it is because people are really suffering. My last speaker here, Ms. Nesbit, is a minister. I'm also a minister, even though I'm a Realtor. So I know, I feel what people are feeling. I have a lot of clients that are not able to afford this kind of ridiculously high-value houses because they don't have the income. And we have members of the church that are being left homeless if it wasn't for the assistance that the government is giving. And if the county has been given some money, please, I'm pleading for us to manage that. You know, I, I'm not very upset, but I'm concerned. And I just wanted to share that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do as well on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Mr. Josh Allgood. Mr. Allgood, come on up.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm Joshua Allgood. I am probably the youngest one here at thirty-two. I came to Rockdale in 2018. I was pretty happy with my house. I paid a nice, refinanced 2019 because of COVID. Got a stupid low rate of two-point-nine percent, which he would know that that's a good rate. However, I got a shortage because property tax increase. I had nothing to do with that. Now, I looked at the city of Rockdale employees at thirty-seven thousand is their average as an employee of Rockdale. Ms. Nesbit, you make one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. That is two-hundred-and-two percent higher than the average of your employees, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine percent higher than the minimum salary of Rockdale. So you're, you're literally sitting twice, two-hundred percent more than everybody else around here. Good Lord. Inflation is at an all-time high at seven-point-eight percent. You want to have a budget of seventy-nine million from the current at seventy-five million, increase of four-point-one million. Now I have to ask y'all questions. These are our boards. Did Jorge Diaz get his six-month severance pay and hundred-and-fifteen days of, of, uh, of his leave paid through taxes? Of course they did. Or Rosalyn Miller? She got three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars for three years of equal opportunity that y'all violated. Y'all legit violated somebody's civil rights and are sitting here today holding a government position. Someone's like Gonzalez over there. Gonzalez was accused of assaulting somebody. That would be me. However, your mass mandate from your employees that didn't even follow that because it was out of order. Y'all should be well arrested, especially you, Ms. Washington. With your leadership retreat at Chateau Allen Resort in Browsington, it's a four-point-five-star resort that y'all are trying to put the taxpayers twenty-one thousand dollars to foot the bill. I hope y'all had a good time. I really do. Now, with our thirty-seven thousand dollars, more than five hundred kids got new book bags because we couldn't afford it. Y'all posted on Rental Assistance on Facebook because people can't afford the rent. Then you canceled the night out. Pretty sure y'all still flipped the bill for it. Y'all are just taxing us. Y'all need to be, y'all need to step down. Y'all really do. That'd get a recall. Y'all need to stop being in government. It's just plain and simple. I did a service to my country. Y'all should do a service to the people because y'all are not even, y'all aren't even our neighbors. You don't even live here. Come on now.
Thank you, Ms. Allgood, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Ms. Benia Nelson? Nelson, Ms. Nelson. Come on up, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I'm a born and raised native of Rockdale County. I've seen a tremendous amount of growth over the years. When I became an adult, I met, married someone, moved away, moved back to the county to raise my daughters in what we have labeled as perfectly positioned, and we should be. But there are so many things that are going on, including the pandemic, that is fostering false hope in our people. We need to not do this mileage rate increase at this time. It is causing a heartbreak, as many of the speakers previous to me have already noted. Taxes are increasing. Salaries are not increasing. Food and the way of life for us is just not increasing. I'm now the full-time caregiver of my mother, and I have to watch her month after month try to struggle to pay her bills. She's coming down with Alzheimer's and dementia. She has other medical problems, and she's just sad to see her county go to waste. We have got to find a better way of handling monies and funds that have been allocated to Rockdale County. We speak of the schools, and I know the kids, they need the help. It was a struggle last year to see our children go through some of the things that they've gone through. I've been blessed. I've raised my kids and educated them, but they too see the struggles that the younger kids are coming up with having to deal with. It's not fair to them. Let's put more emphasis on that, and we need our safety system because crime is on the rise. And also, what I would like to see is more emphasis placed on that five percent that you put on transportation increase. Because if you've seen the traffic on 138 and Salem Road, the traffic is all the way down I-20, causing a jam every single day. We need to do better, Commissioners, to make the county a, as we say, perfectly positioned place for this particular location. I've seen so many changes, but the changes now are saddening me because I see our county changing in a way that is not reflective of what I know of Rockdale County.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Ms. Tina Hobbs. Come on up, Ms. Hobbs.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I just found out a few days ago that y'all are big one to the Chateau La Line in Atlanta, and that's going to be twenty-one thousand dollars. Y'all have all asked for us to use the Rockdale County places to use for the event center like the Colossus Mill, which I didn't agree with y'all buying that place, but when you made it and made it an event center, and we have our own people that does the food and things, y'all should have used them instead of paying the twenty-one thousand dollars out. And when y'all go to Augusta for some of your meetings, why can't we have them come here and we can have the money come here to Rockdale County? I've lived here all my life. I've lived here till here recently when the, the mileage rate, the mileage rate is not going up, but the taxes went up on our houses. So our taxes are going up, and the elderly can't afford that, no matter what you do. And y'all have been letting know through some emails that Alice copied on that other counties are not raising their taxes at all. They're staying as they were last year. So I think we should think about that before y'all go to doing that. But whatever we're spending out of our budget, it needs to be what we really need to spend, not just be highfalutin and wanting to be in the big, nice hotel or whatever and be paid for breakfast and lunch, and more likely the pecuers be paying for the supper. And if I work for somebody, I'd be caught on the carpet if I did that, and I would just like for y'all to think about that.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up, thank you. Next up is Corliss Turner. Ms. Turner, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. I didn't write anything up. I just took some, just some points I want to bring up. One thing I want to bring up is that in Rockdale County, there's sixty-seven thousand, sixty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five citizens. Of that is twelve thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven seniors. The seniors on social security, their rate only increased one point, whatever average of twenty dollars a month, but their taxes, or my taxes, increased about fifty dollars a month. The food has gone up two-point-six percent. Gas has gone up. The national average is three dollars and eighteen cents. That's up a whole dollar from last year. People are in lines for food banks. I don't know if either one of you all, I doubt it, been in the line for food bank. But there are still people unemployed. When they shut the country down, the ones that worked in restaurants and various places, some people could work from home and still do their jobs. There's others that could not. When the children were doing virtual, that meant more food. Some parents had to quit work in order to stay home with their children. And then the wages on these jobs is just ridiculous. It's like slave wages, you know, Hebrew slaves. The water bill hasn't been consistent, which causes your rate to go up. Once you reach a certain, so many gallons, then go up to the next level. They have been coming sixty days, and that causes the sewer to, to go up, so the residents are still being affected. The storm drain went from forty dollars to a hundred-and-six dollars. I've got some other things here. Oh, the homes that are way overpriced. Investors are buying those homes. They're gutting them out, putting in all new appliances, all new floors, granite countertops. My house don't have that, so my house is not equal, it's, it's not worth that much. At twenty-eight, hold on, at 549 Greenview Avenue, that house is listed for two-hundred-and-fifteen. Someone bid it two-twenty. They gutted the house out, investors with money. And it's owned by the real estate is, I'm sorry, SFR Brokers. And then 611 Greenview Avenue, 652, twenty-eight seventy-six. These are all owned by management companies or investors that have money to gut the house. If you were to go to their house, yeah, it, it might be worth that, but if you come to my house, I still have carpeting, you know, everybody's getting a new floors. I have the countertops. I don't have granite countertops, and you cannot base everybody's house on what other houses are selling for because you know, and I know, and all of you all know that these houses are not worth this.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Oh, is that saying my timer? I thought I had three more minutes. Okay.
This is okay. I'm going to let you wrap up your closing comments. Go right ahead.
Okay, basically, what I'm trying to say is that you have went, went up on, on the storm drain. You went up, you're talking about going up on the taxes. Social Security is not going up, and now seniors are paying school taxes. I spent all my life, well, most of my life paying school taxes, and my children are out of school, and I don't think that's fair. Maybe you need to raise the exemption amount from thirty-five thousand to be equivalent to the assessment value. Thank you.
Thank you for all of you on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. I have only the first one, Erlene. Come on up, Ms. Erlene.
I don't have a lot to say. I just want to stop to let me get my paper. Because I want to know what the host exemption is, because I have no idea. Somebody needs to explain to me what the host exemption is, please. God, hello, everybody. What the host exemption is, how to apply for it, and who's eligible.
So what I'll do for you, Ms. Erlene, is make certain that you get a complete understanding as to what the host exemption is. Fortunately, tonight, sitting with us is our chief tax appraiser, tax assessor. And he will give you his card and set up an opportunity where he can give you a one-on-one explanation and explain all of that beyond what we've done on the video this evening.
Okay, I understand it, but is there anyone else in here that who needs to know what the host exemption is? So it's not only, I'm not the only person that needs to know that information.
So here's what I'll do. Here's what I'm going to do this evening, and I appreciate that you polled the audience. What I'll do, I'm going to show it again. In addition to me showing it again, I'll have an opportunity for, in fact, the record marker, would you stand so that they can see who you are? Go ahead and give Ms. Erlene the card.
Thank you.
And he has a pocket loaded with business cards.
Okay.
If anyone else would like to get his card, like, as you're exiting, to get an understanding. One of the things that we said at the beginning, and which is why I asked the public relations department to show the video twice, because it is confusing. It is, for, for most people who really don't understand the formula, the process, it's quite confusing. But the tax assessor will explain the state mandating that they have to plug in, and he can do that for anyone who is confused about it.
All right. I understand that part, but it did not tell us how to apply for it and who's eligible.
We can make sure that happens.
All righty. And I just want to agree with everybody else's. We have seniors here. People can't afford it.
Thank you, Ms. Erlene.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I love your spirit. Mr. Carl Morgan. Come on up, Mr. Morgan.
I'm Mr. Carl Morgan. I just wanted to come in and, and let you all put a face to the name because I've emailed all three of y'all on several cages about my property and my property taxes and how it was being appraised and everything else. I think it's utterly, utterly ridiculous that we're sitting here having this discussion about raising the mileage rate. And during this time where we're going through COVID and everything else, to be having this discussion at this time is, is just ridiculous. And to me, sure, poor leadership. I'm a military veteran, and, and leadership is important. And I can tell that we lack real leadership for the simple fact that I've been sitting there on that hill in the middle of the aisle, and nobody offered me a seat. There's no accessible seating in this room, and that's a problem. And so y'all need to work on that as, as well as this thing with the mileage rate. I'm just here to say, if y'all don't do the right thing, I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure y'all are not sitting in those seats again. That's, that's just the bottom line because this doesn't make sense. We shouldn't be having this discussion, not at this time when people out there going through what they're going through. And so for y'all even to bring it to the table, it's kind of like disrespectful to the citizens of Rockdale County. You know, we pay for these. We do. So y'all are going to have to make a decision and do better.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, and thank you. All right, Commissioners, so that wraps up public comment. We'll now go to board comment, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
I have no comments.
No comments. Commissioner Williams?
Let's see if I can get this off. So I appreciate everybody who came out to speak tonight. I know that for some of you, I think it's maybe your first time here because I don't recognize you. Many of you, I did recognize you and know you from other places. I think it's, I think that's one of the things that I like about being a commissioner in a county is because I can recognize you and see you and, and have a conversation with you. I think, I do just want to mention that last year, when most of those counties that are taking the rollback this year did not take the rollback rate, we did take the rollback rate. we did take the rollback rate last year. And so, Ms. Geller, I see you shaking your head no, but we did take the rollback rate last year. We didn't do that until the final vote. And so we went through these public hearings. But in the end, we took the rollback rate last year. Knowing that to do that last year, we really couldn't do it two years in a row. But we are able to keep the millage rate the same. It's a, it's a quandary. It really is a quandary. And again, I appreciate all of you who came out to speak tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm gonna take an opportunity to say to every speaker that came out this evening, we certainly do appreciate you tonight. This is the first of a three-part series of hearings that we will continue to have until we conclude. Nothing has been decided as of yet. Everything that you've seen has been a proposal coming from the Board of Commissioners. One of the things that we've attempted to do tonight is to break down and create a level of understanding as to how the tax dollars aren't giving it up within this particular county, between the county government, Rockdale County, the city of Conyers, and the Rockdale County Public School System. I do want to remind you that we are not in charge of the public school system. I heard a few expressions, and I want to encourage you to reach out to the members of your Board of Education and to the local school system. They too have a board meeting, a public board meeting, because you pay taxes for school and school operations. So I think that's the best platform to voice your concerns concerning the eighty-two percent of your taxes going toward the school. In addition to that, as I pointed out to one of the speakers earlier, it can be quite confusing. But I want to let you all know that we are taxpayers, and that we do understand what's happening in our community and our country. We're dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. So I encourage you to continue to send the emails. You're welcome to send the emails. To a lot of y'all that have already done that. Send the emails. Also, I want to encourage you to gain even a greater understanding. I welcome any of you all to come to my office and sit down and have a one-on-one so we can explain. And even if I don't have the answers, we have content experts, such as our tax assessor's office, who can help you understand the homestead exemption and how all of those things factor in. I heard someone mention the difficulty of wages for the workforce in America. That includes Rockdale County. We're experiencing the same thing here with county employees. One of the things that was very difficult but a plus for Rockdale is that the Rockdale County Water Resources is owned and operated by the citizens of Rockdale County. So that's a major asset that we have. No one's water has been disconnected or turned off. The fact that we've had a delay in some of the building cycle is similar because we've had a difficulty getting people to come to work. I don't know whether you've had an opportunity to drive and move around Rockdale County lately, but just about every other shop and manufacturer and industrial warehouse has a sign that says, "Now hiring and help wanted." So we are competing against them, because now they're able to offer wages for folks to drive fork lifts, run packing, shipping, and receiving, and a lot of higher wage than what the county government can actually offer. So we've lost employees in code enforcement. We've lost employees in terms of our meter reader service. And that creates, there's a trickle-down and somewhat of a domino effect. And we have to do what we need to do to keep these things moving. And yes, the opera funds have been, just like the CARES Act money of last year, the opera funds have come in handy to help us, to be able to help so many residents in Rockdale County who's facing eviction and other events that are going on. We've made sure that, as relate to our seniors, that we have partnered with the over three hundred churches in Rockdale County to make sure that no senior get left behind when it comes to food and medical services or medical transportation to their doctors and hospital needs. We're working. It is tough. We have to take care of the roads, every pothole. We have a program called See Something, Say Something. If you see something, call and tell us. Technology, everyone has a cell phone, take a picture of it. We try our best to be as responsive as we possibly can. I'm almost always giving out my number to just about everybody I come in contact. And many people I'm looking across in this audience have my direct cell number, and you know the best way to reach me is to text me. Now, let me say this as I wrap this up. We hear you loud and very clear. And we do believe that we're perfectly positioned along the I-20 corridor. We do believe that. But we are not a perfect county. But we are the best county in the state of Georgia. We're not, we're not Fulton, we're not DeKalb, we're not Carr, we're not none of those counties. We are Rockdale, and we care about our citizens. And you've elected us to do that and to move this county forward. So we've heard you tonight. There's two more of these meetings that will take place. We encourage you to take the time in between these. You can continue to send an email. You can schedule time to talk with our tax assessor's office and gain an understanding there. Is there any reason for an executive session regarding this budget hearing?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight. We're gonna be transitioning into our regular scheduled board meeting immediately after the transition. For this meeting, as relate to the millage rate, this meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned as relate to the budget hearing.
I thought you might have had that presentation on the post.
Sir?
I thought you were gonna have another presentation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Morgan, for reminding me. If public relations will bring that presentation back up, I would be appreciative of it. Thank you so much.
What is the millage rate? Well, simply put, it's what you owe on taxes on your property. Each mill represents one dollar for every one thousand dollars in property value. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a 2021 millage rate of eighteen point zero one six mills, which will require an increase in property taxes by seven point nine four percent. Now, although the county would be keeping the same millage rate from last year, the state still views it as a tax increase because property values are going up, which is good news for residents who plan on selling their property in the near future, since their property value and home equity has increased. To help lower your tax bill, the homestead exemption and/or the homestead option sales tax, also known as host, can be applied to that amount. So for instance, if your house is valued at one hundred thousand dollars, you would owe approximately seven hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents in taxes. But with both the homestead exemption and host exemption applied, you would only owe approximately one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents. Similarly, if your house is valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you would owe approximately one thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and sixty cents in taxes. Now, after applying both the homestead exemption and the host exemption, you would only owe approximately four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. That's a lot of savings. So where exactly do these tax dollars go? Well, for every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives eighteen percent or eighteen cents. Let me repeat that. For every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives eighteen percent or eighteen cents. The remaining eighty-two percent goes toward the school system, which sets its own millage rate. The eighteen cents from each dollar funds public safety, general government, court services, recreation, and transportation, which are all included in the general fund. We want to hear from you on what you have to say about this. So be sure to come out to one of the three public millage rate hearings. The first one will be held on Tuesday, August seventeenth, at 6:00 PM in the Assembly Hall located at nine zero one Main Street. The second will take place on Thursday, August nineteenth, at 9:00 AM at the JP Carr Community Center located at nine eight one Taylor Street. And the last public hearing will take place on Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, at 9:00 AM in the Assembly Hall located at nine zero one Main Street. After the 9:00 AM public hearing on August twenty-fourth, the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners will hold a call meeting immediately after, at 9:30 AM, to set the millage rate. Now, if the millage rate is adopted at eighteen point zero one six mills, it will stay the lowest it's ever been in seven years, when it was set at twenty point seven mills in 2013. We certainly hope this helped you understand the millage rate better, and we're looking forward to seeing you at the upcoming public hearings.
So let me just make one comment about the host. One of the questions that you asked, you do not have to apply for the host exemption. It is given to homeowners automatically, because what it is, is there's an extra penny. The voters of Rockdale County a number of years ago voted to have an extra one cent sales tax to be used to help offset the property tax. You do have to apply for the homestead exemption, but you do not have to apply the host tax. Host exemption will come off your bill automatically. It may not have come out on your, you haven't gotten your tax bill yet. What you got was the, what do you call that? The assessment, right, which does not show the host. Okay?
I know that the school tax is a major concern for all of us. Are you all aware, who tell the group, when their board meeting, their just board meeting, and a lot of individuals, based on the comments, we thought that was gonna be covered also?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm really glad you asked that. So let me give you this information, and I do not want to give you the wrong information. And while I'm talking, I'm gonna ask that executive director relative to pull up the actual meeting dates so that we can give you the actual meeting dates. But that does come up under the Rockdale County Public School System. They have a website for school operations, just like the county and the city, all government agencies. So there is a link on their website that explains the meeting times, dates, and location. But you're absolutely correct. Even the question and concern about the county Board of Commissioners having the authority to reduce the amount or cap off for HYS for those citizens who pay into school taxes, we don't have that authority at this level. I also want to remind folks, because I've heard several valid, very valid concerns, and I think it's about education and communication. Number one, every resident, not only do you have county commissioners, you have state representatives and state senators. You also have local school board representatives, who are elected to make decisions about what happens at the school board. So that's another governing body to communicate with. One other piece of communication I want to share, and I think a lot of people are confused and they just don't know. So I'm gonna clear up, hopefully clear up a little bit of that tonight. For example, State Route Highway 138, that is a state-operated highway. Interstate 20, both eastbound and westbound. When Mr. Wright made mention, and he is absolutely correct. I have sent at least three letters out of the office of the chairman. The mayor of the city of Conyers has sent at least two letters out of his office to our state representatives, asking them to fix, clean up, and repair that unsightedness on I-20, both eastbound and westbound, particularly with the fence. We took it another step further. We had the public relations department earlier this year to do a live video. We sent that live video so they can see what we see to the state Capitol. Citizens can support your commissioners by contacting your state representatives, your state senators. As relate to any item relative to the local school board, you need to find out, she's gonna give you that date in just a moment, the date, the time, and the location of the school board meeting. And you don't have to have a young person enrolled in the school in order to show up at a school board meeting, because you contribute to the taxes that contribute to the schools. So we want to encourage you to make sure that you understand. I gave an example of one of the major highways, 138. Also, Highway 20, Highway 20 runs right through Conyers. You do know our county is divided by I-20, of the north side and the south side. And we have three major state highways that hold us hostage. The number one highway that holds us hostage is right there, 138 and Dogwood Drive, or Iris Drive with the checkers. Well, we didn't design that. That's a state road. It was designed by the state of Georgia. And they've got plans for future redesign, to redesign and redevelop to relieve some of the most crazy congestion that comes through our community. How can you help? How can you help? I'm glad to ask. You can send a letter to your state representative. Find out who that person is that represents your district as your state representative, your state senator. Find out what school post, school board member represents the area that your home is located as relate to your voice with the local school system. And you can share with them about what, at what point do you cap it off, cut it off, also finding out what steps to take in order to say that a person that's sixty-two, sixty-five, or seventy-five stopped paying school taxes. That decision is not made with this body. We have absolutely no control over that. And I think with a lot of this stuff, most citizens don't understand. You're absolutely right. It's a pandemic, time is tight. Small businesses, well as medium and large businesses, are finding difficulties finding employees. The county government, we have lost a good number of employees, not just due to COVID, but because other private sector industries are able to pay our employees a whole lot greater wage. So we lose those folks to them. So that's what's happening there. This is a series, I only entertain a couple, but this is very unusual, Commissioners, but I think for the sake of education, information, and understanding, it's important that we show the citizens that we are more than engaged about their concerns. I'm gonna take the lady right here, and the right dumb come to this right after this. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And if you would, I would ask that you come on up, come on up front. We're doing an extended version here, Director Rouse.
I know. I see that.
It's all good.
It generates more questions when you hear other people make their comments and have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And in this unique time where, for me, home prices have skyrocketed, is there any exception or any kind of consideration that's gonna be made regarding this time? I mean, within a year?
Let me talk about from a local standpoint. So the county government has no control over an individual's mortgage issue. Now, that's between the mortgage lender, the bank, whomever that is.
Right.
My understanding, watching what everybody else is watching in America, the federal government has made and continue to make tons of concessions to accommodate the struggle that we're in. What we're doing tonight is hearing from all of y'all, and there's two more meetings that this board will process every single thing that's said. Here's what we, here's part of the process. To hear you tonight and to factor in all of your concerns, to think about where we are financially as a county, as a community, and to factor in the future of Rockdale County. In order to do what we do, it takes employees. It takes services and resources. Now, some folks talked about the county scaling back. Here's the important part of thinking about when you say scaling back in the county. That means cutting of services, and that means cutting of the workforce. Every other day, I'm getting an email or text message or a call from a citizen saying they want to see this happen, they want to see that happen, they want to see more of this. Well, when you're asking for more out of one breath, and I've got another group of people saying, no, we need less. And at the same time, they call, and the next day, they say, well, the grass has been cut. The parks look awful. I can't go down the street because limbs are hanging over. We have to have people who can get out and service those areas in our community so that the community is safe and healthy. Now, this role, we're not looking for a Peter Parker, we're not doing that. This is a tough job, and we've got ninety-plus thousand residents to make a decision for. So again, we're hearing what you're saying tonight.
Okay.
We're factoring in where the county is as a whole. We're also thinking about the future of this county and how we can make sure that it is in the best financial, economic position going forward. And that, it's not, there's nothing easy about that word that even apply to this conversation at all. We hear you, we feel the pain of our residents and our seniors in this community, and we're, based upon where we're sitting and our level of authority, we're doing everything that we can do to make sure that we look out for our seniors and all of our taxpayers as a whole. Again, the school board is a separate entity. We have no authority over them. And honestly, when I call the members of the school board, they tell me folks don't come out to the board meetings. So they do have a board, and by the way, Director Rouse, you get the date and time and location of that board meeting?
So their next board meeting is scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 PM.
So their next board meeting is scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 PM, and it will be at their new facility, which used to be Pine Street, but over there off Pine Street, so.
Very good. Give that date, time, room, and get that location.
This Thursday, August 19th, 7:00 PM, the Pine Street location, which is their main headquarters now.
That's their brand-new central office now, which was the old Pine Street Elementary located right behind us here. They have a beautiful auditorium that you paid for. And their meeting will start over there, and I encourage you to go talk with them. But not just go to the meeting, not just go to the meeting. Those board members are elected just like the three of us. Get their business cards, sit down, talk with them, and gain understanding. And perhaps you can have some influence, because you elected them as well.
Right.
Okay? I hope that helps. Ms. Wright?
I don't need to come to the mic, but do you, as our chairman, ever meet with the school board on our behalf?
Yes ma'am. So let me tell you, Ms. Wright, the question is, how often do I meet with the school board? Well, the beauty of Rockdale County, and which is one of the reasons why I describe our county as being the best in the state, although a small county, the collaborative effort between the office of the chairman, the mayor's office, and the only one city we have is the city of Conyers, and the superintendent's office of the school board, we have a group called the Big Six. So it's me, the chief of staff, Chief K., the mayor, Mayor Evans, and the city manager, Mr. Tony Lucas, the city of Conyers, Dr. Terry Ochs, who is the superintendent of schools for Rockdale County Public Schools, as well as Ms. Mandy North, who is the champion woman of the Rockdale County Public School System. All six of us meet just, we have a scheduled quarterly meeting. Throughout this pandemic, that meeting has really turned into just about monthly. We talk about every single thing that happens in our community related to each separate entity. And then a lot of those things, as you know, they overlap. So we have a big backlash, whether the schools are closing due to the pandemic, because we have employees who are parents. That impacts our workforce. We have to make decisions as to how we shuffle that around and accommodate those people who have minors who have to stay at home and, by the law, they can't be home unattended without supervision. So we stay in concert with the school system as relate to the taxes. That's something that is out of the control of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. The school system is in charge of that, but your state, I don't want to give you the wrong information. Your state representatives and your state senators will still have to champion that cause on your behalf. Someone's gonna have to contact your state senators, your state representatives, and let them advocate on your behalf, if that's the collective mindset of the citizens of Rockdale County. Should it start? Yes, it should start with the local system. I think if you can impress upon those local board members your concerns and your sentiments, that may ignite an interest to get something changed or turned around, or maybe make an adjustment. We don't do that part of it. You have to do that, because they're separate entities. I hope that brought some clarity to it.
Yeah, because that's understandable. I think when the, when citizens hear 82% of our taxes going to the schools, yet the school's performance doesn't even, we're paying higher taxes and our schools are not performing.
So Ms. Wright, and again, and I'm gonna say this to you as I wrap up, as we get ready to go into this other meeting. I hear you loud and very clearly. And I think because 82% of the taxes collected in Rockdale County, as stated, goes to the school system, you have earned the right to show up at a board meeting. You have earned the right to talk to a board member. You've earned the right to talk with the school superintendent and oppress upon those individuals your concerns. Because if you are concerned about the performance, the academic excellence, and the performance of the students in our county, and you're looking at the percentage of funds we're putting toward education, it's not matching. There is a platform for you to articulate that, and it's called the Rockdale County Public School System. So get ahold of the board members over there, because they're not just board members just because. They are the ones who conduct the decisions on behalf of the Rockdale County Public School System.
Okay, and then you, as our chairman, so I expect you as our elected leader on our behalf to confront these issues too. I know you don't have power over them, but bring our issues to them.
Yes ma'am.
And it's ridiculous. And then how many of you made about sending a video about the appearance of our 2000 mentors?
To the Georgia Department of Transportation. Well, they have given us response, but let me just be very candid with you. Rockdale is the second smallest county, landmass, in the state of Georgia. There's 159 counties. So as chairman of Rockdale, when I sent, we sent multiple letters. Then I asked my PR department to send a video, and we sent a very, you see the work that this team does, they do a great job sending, putting the video together. So we sent a very graphic video. So it gets to the Georgia Department of Transportation and perhaps the governor's desk. I don't know what happens to it in terms of responding back to this one county out of 159. I know that, I can only imagine, the governor who's in charge of 159 counties and over 600 cities in the state of Georgia. When you talk about appropriation and allocation of funds, there's a lot of decisions to be made based upon priorities and need. We're doing that with just this one county. So I could only imagine, out of 159 counties, the difference that we do advocate for you, because each year since 2017, this board has decided to host our own transportation summit. And what we do, we make sure every one of the top decision makers, as relate to the Georgia Department of Transportation, the Atlanta Regional Commission, and all of those transportation agencies that make decisions on how funds come into the county to improve our roads and our thoroughfares, particularly those roads that are state roads or federal roads, such as an I-20 or highway 138, which is a state road. So we host that so that we don't get left behind, we don't get lost. We spent a full day at that summit explaining and breaking down all of the high priority transportation needs inside of Rockdale County. And we've been told since 2017 that there's no other county doing that. And because we not only have a seat at the table, but a voice, we've been able to get some of the funding to move some of these big projects forward here in the county. So I'm sure you're riding around, you're seeing some of the improvements that are being made. The project on Salem Road is moving forward. It's a state project that will take care of the 138 road, that's not, that's the state highway. But those are the agencies you gotta contact. You gotta get ahold of your state representatives, your state senators. As relate to anything local school related, you have got to make your way over to the local school system and impress upon them.
I don't want to hold the time, but I guess what I see, so, so I'm working out for it.
Well, let me say this, Ms. Wright. Out of respect for my staff and this meeting and the laws and rules that we gotta govern ourselves about, I've extended it way beyond. I'd love to hear more from you one-on-one. You know, you have my number, you can reach me, and we can get into that. But I wanted to give a general overview. The main point I wanted to let this audience of citizens know that we are passionate about what's happening in our community. We are compassionate, we understand. We certainly understand the number of seniors that are here in Rockdale County. But we want to make sure that you are voicing your concerns with the appropriate entity and agency. In our county, because your chairman is so visible, everybody believes that I'm in charge of every single movement in the entire county. And that's not true. We have a city of Conyers, we have a county school system, and we're not the boss of neither one of those. You are. So I encourage you, I'm not the boss of the sheriff. I'm not the boss of the tax commissioner. I'm not their boss. They, those people are elected officials. You are their boss, because you go in and you make a vote, you make a decision to have them. So they need to hear from you about your concerns. I've gotta wrap this up and move into this other meeting at this time, commissioners. I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, we are, it is Tuesday, August the 17th, and it is slightly beyond the 7:00 PM hour, 7:21 to be exact. And we're here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. We're now calling our meeting to order at this time. And I will start with a, as we yield to the transition here, Director Relics.
Yes. Is this the meeting for the bond?
Yes.
I'm gonna call that in just a second. All right, so this is the call meeting, resolution, bond purchase agreement, associated document to adopt stormwater bonds.
So Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, what you have before you this afternoon is the final product of the stormwater bond process that we have been going through. Today, we've got the supplemental bond resolution, the bond purchase agreement, and the associated documentation. We have the team that has been working on this, these bonds here, in case you have any questions. But tonight, I ask that the board formally adopt the resolution and the bond purchase agreement as presented.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
We don't have a screw. I move that, that we adopt the bond resolution, purchase agreement, and...
The associated documentation, please.
The associated documentation as presented.
Yes.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
And that's a mouthful.
Oh, yes, it is.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions from the board or comments concerning what we're doing, this wonderful opportunity on behalf of Rockdale County?
Yes, I really would like to hear from them with an explanation.
Very good. We have Mr. Guy Logan and several members of his team. Mr. Logan, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If you would raise that mic back up just a... Yes, sir. It'll be okay.
And I have a handout here.
You can, the commissioners and I would love to take a copy of it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be able to understand this.
Good to see you, sir.
No. Thank you.
Oh, sure, sure. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate the opportunity. I'm Guy Logan. I'm a managing director at Citigroup. We've had the honor of serving as your lead underwriter, along with my colleague Bryce Holcomb. We are fortunate for that opportunity. And I want to first also acknowledge the team, the stormwater team, including obviously your recently minted CFO, Mark, and Terrence, and Marilyn, and Bill. Tremendous, great to work with. And also, that was reflected in the credit rating that was ultimately assigned to the bonds.
Very good.
So the interest rate market is tremendous, is a great time to be in the market. It was today, and the market illustrated that with their investment dollars. The bond traction, transaction was assigned a double A2, double A3 rating, which is the second highest category, a very strong rating.
Yeah, that does it. Absolutely.
And that rating really speaks to the quantitative factors, some of the things that you've been discussing this evening, millage rate, the fiscal health of the county, but also the qualitative. And I alluded to the team that worked on this, and that's something that the credit analysts cited. So it's quantitative and qualitative. And at the end of the day, when you enter the bond market, people ultimately, the rating agencies assign the double A3, but investors vote with their money. And what they voted today with, you were selling 8.5 or 8.6 million dollars in bonds, which ultimately is gonna garner 10 million dollars in a project's monies. But investors submitted 54 million dollars in orders. So there were 54 million dollars in bonds that they wanted to buy. You were only selling 8.55 million in bonds. So that afforded the county the opportunity to get lower interest rates. And those interest rates, we started, we went up with an initial level, but we were able to adjust those because of that high demand. In our vernacular, I'll try and stay away from acronyms, but the bond issue was oversubscribed. When you have oversubscription, that oversubscription ranged from two times oversubscribed to eight times oversubscribed by each of the maturities, which extended over 20 years. So that afforded the opportunity for the, ultimately, the county to lock in all in true interest costs of 2.498% for 20 years, which is pretty astounding. So here again, some of those investors, Valley National Bank Credit, Swiss, Eaton Vance, T. Rowe Price, the Boston Company, those are some of the most notable investors in the municipal market. So hats off to you there. And then also, we expect to, pending your approval, we'll move towards closing on August the 24th. And at that time, the bond proceeds will be delivered, and then your team can put those monies to work as planned, as programmed. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions if you have any.
Commissioner Washington, any questions for Mr. Logan?
I had no questions. I said we should have had this meeting first.
Commissioner Williams?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Logan, thank you so much for your presentation, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and your team.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on behalf of Terminus, we've been working on this process with the whole team. One thing that Guy didn't mention was, the preliminary estimates were a little bit higher interest rate. It improved from last week to this week.
Wow.
So in the documents that we kind of started with last week, it was probably a 20 basis point lowering to this week, plus the additional savings that he mentioned today. And on behalf of Terminus, we just want to thank you for allowing us to work on this process.
Somebody's praying for Rockdale County.
Yes.
Thank you. Absolutely. Mr. Murray? Yeah, you can't hide behind a mask, Roger. You've been here with a zillion years.
I just follow the leaders, those great gentlemen, and glad to be here too. And Carter and I prepared the paperwork, and we blessed it. So we're ready to go, if you're ready to go, and we'll get her signed up and delivered. I do need to get the bond purchase agreement signed by you tonight. And then Jennifer, do you want to, are you gonna sign the other stuff later?
We can do it now. I would request of the board after they formally adopt it, which would be good. Then we can take just a five-minute break and sign all these documents to get them back, because we have to have them back before, was it midnight tonight?
Yeah, well, the one we have to do tonight is the bond purchase agreement. The rest of the stuff, it's, we can do as little as, as much as we want tonight.
All right.
Let me ask this, because I'm anticipating a swift movement from the commissioners here regarding the rest of our agenda. Do, should we yield until after the meeting and get those documents signed? Or should we take that break?
So, so let's take a break.
We'll take a break.
Let's just get this taken care of.
Okay.
And then go to the end.
So we have a motion and a second, and we can get the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're just five minutes, and we'll start signing.
We'll take five minutes, and let's take care of this administrative paperwork. To get back to the people's business. We can't stay here all night.
Okay.
Here we go again.
Let me have the microphone, I'll get aside of yours.
I promise you, it won't be because of me. So yes, Tony, it works.
There was a time in America where there used to be a standard of four meals per day. Y'all remember what they were? Breakfast, lunch, dinner, and supper. We right at supper time. So I'm gonna move right along. Commissioner, do you really know what supper is?
I'm from Hattie, Georgia.
Oh, yeah. Y'all, y'all were the hardest supper, weren't you?
I'm from California, they don't have supper.
They didn't have no supper out there.
They do not have supper.
Supper probably was a place or thing, or maybe even a person out there, is that right?
Nobody's called dinner supper.
Well, no, dinner and supper were two separate things out here.
Well, there was no, no two separate things. It was dinner. Because that's what normal people do.
Wait a minute now. Slow it down. You been out here how long?
30 years.
You're Georgia Peach. I don't care what you think now. You got fuzz all around you.
Never mind, I don't want to keep this meeting on, but whatever you say, Chair.
No, don't say that. So we're moving right along. We've taken care of the business regarding the stormwater. And I do want to congratulate both of my colleagues for the leadership, as well as the leadership in our stormwater department, finance department, and the collaborative effort on behalf of Terminus. They've done a fantastic job, because as we... They've done a fantastic job, because as we've been stating for five years, that stormwater is the star of the show here in Rockdale County in terms of over forty years of infrastructure neglect. And this will give us an opportunity to start building upon and addressing some of these stormwater issues here in Rockdale County. When I say forty years, that means four decades behind me in terms of whatever, whomever the leadership was at that time did not address the stormwater infrastructure in Rockdale County. And we see storms and torrential downpours, like a hundred-year, a hundred-and-fifty-plus-year floods. We get pictures of folks' backyards and sides of roads and everywhere that's flooded like Lake Erie. So, this will allow us to really upgrade, replace, and repair our stormwater infrastructure throughout Rockdale County, so water can flow the way it should flow and in its, and in its proper places as relate to stormwater and a lot of other things that has to do with stormwater management. So, just wanted to point that out. At this time, Director Rulich, we're moving on to...
I don't think we have any special recognitions or presentations for tonight, so agenda review?
Let's go straight to the agenda review.
Alright.
Commissioners.
So, the first item we have is item 430. This is Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration through the SAMSHA. This is Juvenile Court Family Treatment Court Enhancement Project Grant, the amount of four hundred six thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars. The term is October 1st, 2021, through September 30th, 2022. Item 431 is with the City of Conyers through the Board of Elections to conduct the City of Conyers General Election on November 2nd, 2021, in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred dollars in revenue. The term is September 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021.
So, is there a possibility of a runoff? Does that, how does that work with the city?
Well, the Board of Elections factored in, because they already have a date preset for runoff, in the event that there is one. And of course, if there is a runoff, there's another cost involved, because you gotta have poll workers and people attending.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, if this includes a possible runoff or not?
No, they will come back with a change order.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, alright, next item.
Okay, item 432 is with Udemy Incorporated through Technology Services. This is for Udemy for Business Continuing Education Licenses, in the amount of six thousand one hundred twenty dollars and forty-five cents. It is for twelve months. Item 433 is with Grits and Jelly Butter. This is through General Services, the Recreation Division Department. For our summer concert series, it's a band performance at Costly Mill Park, in the amount of three thousand dollars. The date is September 26th, 2021.
I can't wait for Grits and Jelly Butter. If you've never seen them, they are amazing. Everybody's gonna have a good time.
Yeah, we've been very lucky to get some really good performances.
I'm excited.
Item 434 is with Pittman Construction Company through our Transportation Department. This is for the roundabout at Klondike Road and McDaniel Mill and Hurst Road intersection. This is change order number two to contract 2020-69. This is to add additional items not covered in the initial contract. It's an additional eighty-four thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and fifty cents, and it's SPOS-funded.
Thank God.
Well, and when I was looking at this one, I thought, oh, this is like the renovations we've done with our house. You always uncover something you didn't expect, and then it costs more.
Absolutely. Okay, item 435 is with Summit Construction and Development LLC for our Transportation Department. This is for the Grenade Road Sidewalk Project. The amount is two million one hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. It's two hundred and ten days, and it's SPOS-funded as well.
Good.
I had a, a citizen call me today and wondered if they were gonna do any stormwater...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure with the, with this.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Commissioner, that, that is a part of this process also. There's actually a pipe that goes underneath Grenade Road.
Right.
And it connects, Stormwater Department was affiliated with this project as well. So, yes, the pipe goes underneath Grenade Road, and it will also encompass additional resurfacing, I believe, over a four-thousand-foot stretch along Grenade Road as well after the pipe is installed. So, Stormwater is affiliated with this project as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That was a good question, Commissioner, because stormwater has to be there. If you're talking about creating a sidewalk for the young people to get to the school, you gotta have stormwater infrastructure there to deal with all the rain and runoff from the concrete of the sidewalk. Otherwise, they're walking in puddles of water.
Well, my understanding was that this pipe that runs from Heritage through to Lockenver subdivision is undersized at the moment and needs to be...
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. And the additional pipe is going to have the spray concrete inside of it. And by adding that spray concrete, it makes it more reinforced, and it allows it to last longer.
Longer.
And they also specifically designed the placement of this pipe. Originally, the design was, it was gonna have to go under the Lockenver Neighborhood Sign, which you know how massive that sign is. And our stormwater engineers were able to re, or move that sign to where it did not interfere with the Lockenver Sign, which made the residents of that neighborhood happy, because they loved their big, beautiful sign. They didn't want it damaged, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, next item.
Great. Item 436 is with ADP Incorporated through the Talent Management Department. This is for E-Time Time Clocks in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
And did you know that ADP has their own street?
Wow, they must be doing that.
Yeah, if you look at the contract, their headquarters are on ADP Road or Boulevard or something.
Oh, okay, yes. That's, that's pretty normal.
I know, but I think that I still get amused at that.
Okay, alrighty then.
Easy for employees to remember, right?
So, you've never been down Coca-Cola Way?
Delta Sigma Theta. Washington, DC.
Alright, next item, please.
Okay, item 437 is a contemporary construction easement through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Abbot Lake Road Pump Station. Item 438 is a resolution for the United States Department of Justice for the fiscal year 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the Sheriff's Office. Item 439 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for ProLogic ITS for emergency equipment for the 2021 Dodge Charger, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, and this is SPOS-funded. Item 440 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Dana Safety Supply. This is for emergency equipment for a 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe, in the amount of forty-one thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents, and this is SPOS-funded. Item 441 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for United Rentals of North America. This is for shoot house in the amount of twenty-seven thousand twenty-five dollars, and it's part of the CJCC grant plan.
So, I had to look up what a shoot house was.
What'd you find? What'd you discover? What did it say?
It said it was a place for law enforcement and military that resembles a residential facility where, to teach them how to go in and...
That's right. It's a lot like an assimilator.
Yes.
Alright, Commissioner.
I've never heard that word.
You're gonna be a pitter-packing mama here like Commissioner Washington in a minute. Ready to back up the police, Gonzalez, you got some backup up here.
I'm gonna leave my comments.
We can hang in there, we don't have much left.
Hang in there, almost there.
Alright. Item 442 is a requisition for the General Services Department, the Fleet Division, for Allen Vigil Ford, or 2022 Ford F-250 with service body, in the amount of forty-one thousand six hundred sixty-six, six hundred and sixty dollars, and this is host-funded. Item 443 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department. This is for Scottwood Industries Incorporated for sodium chloride, the solar salt, the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Item 444 is a requisition through the EMA Department. This is for Swift Reach Networks LLC for the community notification platform, Swift Reach, in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Item 445 is a requisition through Technology Services Department, or Dell EMC. This is for the Microsoft 365 Annual License Renewal, in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-three, fifty-four cents. Item 446 is a requisition through the Transportation Department. This is for Atlas Technical Consultants LLC for the project management and pre-construction services, in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. Item 447 is an expenditure request for Chateau-Alain Resort for the BOC Leadership Retreat, in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and twelve cents, and it's a ratification.
So, could I just make a comment on that? The last class I took at ACCG was on board relationships, and the man who was doing that class said it is absolutely necessary that the, that boards have retreats so that they can just focus on their relationships, their communication, and how things work. So, just leave that one here.
Well, I will say that, after the summer, I kind of promised that we would do a retreat so that all of us can get together. And Chief Cave can tell you that it's been kind of, I've been a little reluctant to do this retreat, but I do believe that it's absolutely necessary, because things like, at the bottom, at, at the end of the day, for us to have the second highest bond rating that you can have in this country says everything about what it, our relationships. All of that is dependent upon our relationships, our communications, how we handle our, that we are being fiscally responsible, the way we communicate, and, and to have a, a board retreat so that we can foster these relationships, not just with the board, but with the staff and everything else, is absolutely necessary. And so, that's one of the reasons why I have, you know, kind of changed my tune, but it's, it's, I know for a matter of fact that we have scoured all kinds of resources and places to go near and far. One of the things that, when you do go to ACCG conferences, they do tell you that you need to try to get away from your county for a little while, so that you don't have the, the day-to-day distractions. So, I'm looking forward to this retreat, and I know it is necessary so that we can continue to have the, the kinds of things that we had, like I said, with our bond rating.
Okay, thank you. The next item is item 448, Surplus of Equipment, and it's the Sheriff's Office.
Wait a minute, the surplus of equipment is the Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
The way you said that, you just, that, hold it. Wait a minute now.
They're surplusing the...
Come on, Director Rulich. They've got some equipment housed over at the Sheriff's Office.
Those are your words, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, they have some equipment at the Sheriff's.
Alrighty then. Item 449, please.
Yes, okay, item 449 is an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1. Definitions, Sections 218-1 Permitted Use Table, Section 218-13 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding florists to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 450 is an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1. Definitions, Sections 218-1 Permitted Use Table, Sections 218-13 Supplemental Standards of Use and Standards of Use and Development, and Section 222-2 Parking Space Requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding various types of dwelling to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is also submitted for a first reading for next Tuesday.
Director Rulich, I want to, Commissioners, pause to go back just one to 449 and ask Director Johnson if he would explain the change regarding our local florists and our ordinance, please.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening, Commissioners.
This is simply, it will allow florist businesses to be in an M1 zone. Currently, the order doesn't allow that. Certain areas, this is the Sigmund Road, old Covington Highway area, the, some of the industrial uses there are not as intensive as it is for the long, old Covington Highway. And so, there's one approached us about wanting to use a, a space, a commercial space, that happened to be in an M1, light industrial zone, to do some florist business, so simple as that.
So, create more opportunity.
Create more opportunity, it's very simple.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Director. Alright.
Item 451, our proposed amendments to the Employee Pay and Classification Plan through the Department of Talent Management.
Alright.
So, are we gonna hear an explanation of those from Director Holmes?
We certainly can. Director Holmes, she's always super excited to give us information.
She's already up.
I was gonna speak at the microphone there, but I want it to come up. So, good evening, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Yes, the proposal for the amendments includes the proposal for a new project manager. That project manager will specifically support the initiatives for the stepping up initiative. As we mentioned during our previous miller rate presentation, the other two items are going to be reclassifications, one for RWR, which will be an existing position reclassed to a utility education specialist. That position will focus on community outreach for the objectives for our utility department. And then the third reclass is going to be the current wellness coordinator in my department, Talent Management, will be reclassed to a benefits and wellness coordinator. Those are the proposed amended changements, changes. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions, comments for the Director?
No, I, I met with her today, but I, I just really wanted the public to hear...
Everybody to hear, right.
What those, what we were talking about.
Good move, Commissioner.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out also, the project manager position that will assist with the stepping up initiative will be paid for out of ARPA funds.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, that's great news. Very good, very good. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, very good.
I'm surely wanting to hear that.
Yes.
Absolutely. I don't have, are there any public comments for this meeting itself? I didn't have any red comment cards for this particular meeting. Alright, Commissioners, we're moving to board comment. Commissioner Washington?
I don't have a lot, just, once again, reiterating our stance on COVID. I was in a city this weekend that has enacted an, an ordinance where you have to show proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test within the last seventy-two hours. They're very, very serious about COVID, and I do believe that as the country watches this particular city, that I think we're gonna see more restrictions, like, well, I don't want to say restrictions, protections like that. And the thing about it, that the residents of the city were excited about it, because they felt as if the government was protecting most of the people. Now, there were some people that weren't necessarily excited, but a lot of them felt as if they were being protected by the ordinance. So, we, we really do need to stay vigilant about COVID. It's not going anywhere yet, it's getting worse. So, we, we definitely need to do that. Once again, I'd like to thank Finance and everybody who worked on our bond, our bonds. It is absolutely exciting to have the bond rating that we do. It makes all of this worth it, when we can brag on something as, as great as the second highest bond rating in, in the, that you can have. That, that speaks a lot to this leadership and, and what we're doing as a board of commissioners. So, I'm very proud and pleased, so congratulations to you all, but also the staff and Terminus you all, and have done a good job. Our county attorney always keeps us legal and, and making, moving things forward. That's pretty much all I have this one.
Commissioner Williams?
So, and I just echo everything that Commissioner Washington just said about the bond rating and about COVID. We do need to be vigilant. I hope you've seen the video that the elected officials produced. Well, we didn't produce it. Well, we didn't produce it. Public Relations produced it, but we participated. Let me take this off for a minute. Reminding us that COVID is not over. And I, you know, if you go on the app on the Weather Channel, you can scroll all the way down and it will show you what your coronavirus numbers are for your area. And last Monday, now Mondays, I think they're reporting for the whole weekend. So they're higher. But they've gone, last week, they were like 40 or 50. This Monday, it was 90. So that, and it shows, it has a graph and it shows how it went down and it's going back up at a pretty high rate. Those ending up in the hospital are those that are not vaccinated. And so, you know, again, we encourage everybody to get the vaccination. Yesterday, I had my, I was able to sponsor the Third Annual Nonprofit Appreciation Brunch. And Terminus was one of our sponsors for that. And we thank you and appreciate that. I think, you know, that brunch is just an opportunity to really understand how much our nonprofits do for us in our community. And the key theme of yesterday was make no small plans. They have no magic to inspire one's soul. And Pastor Billy Cox was the keynote speaker and she spoke on that. And in her closing comments, it was so think big.
Think big.
And, you know, I don't know about you, but that just lightens my day to think about, you know, thinking big and all that that implies, that we cannot be limited by somebody else's expectations. One of the speakers gave the example of the four-minute mile that back in 19 whatever it was, nobody had ever run the four-minute mile. And then somebody did. And now over 20,000 people have run a four-minute mile. And the analogy that have our bodies changed, have people changed? No, just the expectation now is that that's doable.
Is that what you're running to?
No, I'm not. I haven't run a four-minute mile.
Trying to put it in ever?
Since I was 18 years old, I hadn't run a four-minute mile since I was about 18.
You did it when you were 18?
I was 12. Don't let it get you.
So anyway. The project manager, she was manager position that she, that Director Holmes was talking about with the stepping up initiative. Stepping up is really a function of and a complement and a support to our public safety. It's not something just for mental health or addictive services. The whole purpose is to keep the people out of our criminal justice system that don't belong there and that ought to be diverted into treatment instead. And so while 49% of our entire county budget goes to public safety, this is just one more effort. And public safety is on, you know, I work very closely with the sheriff, with the city police department, with the judges, with the mental health community, viewpoint health. Every, all of those entities are at the table. And we are working diligently to work in step together, to partner, to make this a safer community. And that really is the whole purpose for that. Those are my comments.
All right. I want to, so, you know, we went through probably about a year and a half of not having a CFO. And we've welcomed in our new executive director and CFO, Mr. Mark Lewis. Commissioners and staff, I want to do a little something different here with my comments this evening. Want to shine a spotlight on our deputy director, Bill Vaughn. Let's give Bill a round of applause. Through the leadership of Deputy Director Bill Vaughn, who is the Deputy Director for Finance, he served in a capacity when we were going through a transition and a lot of change took place. Bill and the team in the Finance Department on the third floor was able to keep the bloodstained banner up the pole high and waving day in and day out. None of our employees missed payroll. All of our account receivables on point and on time. And if there was any type of hiccup here or there, Bill moved swiftly into action to make sure that Rockdale County and its affiliates were taken care of. And that's the kind of leadership. Bill is the type that doesn't say a whole lot. But he executes, he knows how to do it, and he has a very high level of integrity. I just didn't want this opportunity to pass us by because there are so many people behind the scenes who are doing tremendous work on behalf of this county. And I wanted to make sure, Bill, that we let you know publicly how much we, this board, appreciate you filling in the gap. Y'all give him another round of applause. Commissioners, in a world and a workforce where it's so tough to try to retain people and to attract, to attract the right people into our workforce, we're competing against every private sector there is. When you've got qualified, competent people on board, your team who are executing, you have to praise and recognize those people for the fine work. And we have tons of people who do great work throughout Rockdale County. But because everything has to touch finance, everything. And the fact that Bill did it without any moments of difference, he kept his same tone all the way through and done what needed to be done. And we really do appreciate that. I also want to encourage all of our residents, don't forget about our summer concert series. I heard the Commissioner get excited when we found that the Grits and Jelly Butter Band will be the next artist that is coming out. And throughout all of these things, citizens are asking for us to bring so many different things to the county. It is tough because we're still in the pandemic and with this Delta variant, we don't know how things are gonna shift. And we're somewhat in limbo, and I said this last Tuesday. But we've got to govern ourselves accordingly and make sure that we do those things that can keep the county and the community safe as a whole. When I think about all that, without repeating all of what I said on last Tuesday, I will say that it's important that we monitor the economy, not just the national stage, but what's happening here locally because all of it impacts what's happening in Rockdale County. The plus is that economic development is rocking and rolling in Rockdale County. That's a beautiful thing. Also want to wrap up by making mention of the hearing we had a little while ago concerning the militerate. I really was pleasantly pleased, surprised, and I welcome all of the feedback that we came up. I think we took a different shift this time, giving the citizens an opportunity to give open dialogue and feedback. And that's what a democracy is all about. Teaching, explaining and educating and informing people of how things work. And it can be, it can be intimidating, it can sometimes be overwhelming, and it certainly can be confusing. But when we slow down and make sure we give an opportunity for voices to be heard and we give the right answering, the right information and guidance and pointing them in the right direction, it makes it a lot better for folks to digest and to understand. So we encourage all of our citizens to visit our website. We encourage all of our citizens to take a look at all of our social media platforms. There's tons of information about what's happening in our county and how your tax dollars are being spent out of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. Again, I do want to encourage you to check out the school board website. They have a website and they have a governing body. Same thing with the City of Conyers. We control Rockdale County and the Board of Commissioners and what falls up under this office. We don't control the schools and school buses and bus stops. We don't control what happens in the city limits of the City of Conyers. But they have people in place that can support those inquiries that you may have. Director Relich, is there any need this evening for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that being said, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Happy Tuesday and this meeting is adjourned.